To us the date. But there continues to be back and forth about trying to get that money reappropriated for us. And if it does happen, Michael has the RFPs ready, working to get it ready so that we can have that out. And if that's the case, we would also need to have that plan contracted before December 31st. And it would also be an item that would come out of this commission as a recommendation to the county council. But even if we don't get that immediately, I'm an eternal optimist. We, one way or another, we will get there. It just may take a little bit longer, but we got a lot of other work to do, so. But we can talk, we'll talk about that too, because my, my, I'm also just like, I want to make sure I'm not having like a breaking any sort of open meeting law by giving you like business information about what you have out. So I can repeat all of that in open sessions. I just got so excited that I.
I'd say.
We love piping.
So this is, and this isn't a business item for the, the commission, but the counties, just as a, as a personal note, county's land bank authority has been started. And I am currently operating as the presiding officer for the land bank authority. So we just appointed our two other members. So I don't know, the, the members of the county's new land bank authority are me, Barry Glantz, who is the retired attorney, not attorney, mayor of the city of Creve Court, he's also an architect. Then we have Ivy Grant. She is part of the, she's been, she's deep in the realty for.
Maybe Ivy, why?
Ivy, Ivy Grant. Yeah, so she's on, she's been a member. Baricon Shigah, who is with.
The urban leaning, just the Aces of Action?
Yep.
Who am I, Joan Kelly Horn?
Joan Kelly Horn. Many folks may know Joan, Joan's been around for many years. Most notably perhaps, she, she was briefly a congressman. Say, I think it was the second district, maybe it was the first.
The old second district?
Right, in one of its 1990s configurations. And then the board appointed, we appointed our final two members, Karen Jordan, she is an attorney. She is the managing director at Dentons, the office manager at Dentons. So she is a, a member. And then Christina Dancy, who is an assistant vice president at US Bank focusing on community development and equitable house, homeownership and, and mobility. So.
So exciting.
There's a lot of, I think that over time, there will be an interplay between land bank and the sort of work this commission is putting forward. So.
What are you looking to do with land, like, like creating a land bank? What's your overall goal?
So my, however, I've stacked by ordinance, the intent of the land bank is to take tax delinquent parcels, clear them, clear their titles and get them back into productive reuse. That is the high, that's the, that is the main stated goal of the ordinance and of state statute. Now, what productive reuse means can be different. We can set some goals, whether that means, do we think it should be like passive green space? Do we think it should be, are we trying to repack these parcels for redevelopment? That's going to change a lot of what the land bank authority gets, some discretion to do. STLCO 2050, comprehensive plan, will serve as the basis for its strategic planning and how it makes its decisions. I will be assuring.
Do you mind coming in on the problem with the tax sale properties now?
Yeah, I can, we can talk about, although Christopher, did you have something specific?
Yeah, I have a question, is the LCRN a same like the, the.
It is the equivalent, but they're, but we're different. So the county's land bank is a partial opt-in link bank, which means that we have discretion over which parcels go into the land bank. The city of St. Louis's land bank, the LCRA, is not, it is the owner of last resort for all tax delinquent parcels, once they reach a certain point.
The nation's first land bank.
Do I, and right, it's the nation's first land bank. LCRA was, and so because they are the, they're basically the owner of last resort, they have tens of thousands of vacant parcels that they have to maintain in, within their portfolio. Whereas the partial opt-in process, or the St. Louis County land banks, will mean that we will have the ability to choose which parcels go into the land bank. It will not be all parcels that are, that are tax delinquent. It will only be parcels that we choose to take.
Well, that could be a parcel tax delinquent, but we decide for.
It's going to go through the traditional tax bail process and we're just like, it doesn't meet our criteria for whatever reason. But if there are parcels that do meet our criteria, we will be able to then exercise the judicial foreclosure process to clear title, full property.
So you're going to have zero properties?
Currently, zero properties, and we won't have properties for a while. Because right, I mean, we're, when I'm talking about, we're standing.
You still have to do bylaws and stuff.
Yeah, we're not even, we don't have a bank account yet, we don't have.
You don't have a chair.
We don't, right, we have, I'm the presiding officer, you know, we don't have, again, it's just seven people who are sitting around a table being like, fuck, we're.
The problem, the problem that we have, the problem that we have is that properties that go through the tax sale process don't have clear enough title that we can, they can be resold. So you can't renovate the, the house on it, you can't build a new home without doing a quiet title suit to clear the title.
Right.
And of course, that's costly.
Costly, time costly.
And there's no process to just speed this up.
So you're described, what you're describing is the chap, I only learned this, like, this is not, this is stuff I just learned. The chapter 140 in U, in US, in Missouri statute, is this, is the process by which tax delinquent parcels in most counties are disposed of. It's the traditional idea that, you know, once you have so many tax, once you've been tax delinquent for so long, then the county sells the property out on the steps of the, yeah, on the self, on the steps of the, of the courthouse. But what you're buying is you're not buying the property, you're buying basically the right to redeem after you fire, go through the quiet, the quiet title suit, suit process, which is time consuming, costly. There's a lot of risk involved, it really makes properties much less likely to be redeveloped. The chapter 141 process in state statute is now available to St. Louis County, which is, puts a lot more process on county government. But what happens is, is that if pro, if properties are funneled into the 141 process, county then goes through a judicial foreclosure process where we go through the entire thing ourselves. So that by the time it pops out, we're not popping out a tax delinquent property that has tax delinquency. We have gone through the constitutional processes to make sure that potential property owners have all been properly notified. Every opportunity has been given, we're making it so property owners don't have to go through the quiet title process. We are the, or lawsuit process, we're the ones that are clearing all of that. Now, time wise, it's still going to take the county a similar amount of time. It's just county now has the ability to do that. And it's only, but it's only going to be for those parcels that get sort of, it's not going to be wholesale, that we do this for every single tax delinquent parcel in the future. It's more about those parcels that we think are the most likely to help stabilize communities and also that are ones that we think are the most redevelopable for counties to spend its resources, its time and its money to do this chapter 141 process. And then those parcels, once they've gone through the 141 process, can then be taken by the land bank with clear title. All tax, all needs and taxes have been completely got rid of, as if we can dispose of the properties. And so that when people start to buy property from the land bank, they are buying property free and clear and ready for.
I smell an October monthly education section.
I don't know, it may not, it may not, it may obtain the back debt for that.
I smell it.
It may just get cleared, excuse me, the, the process will just, there's not a, and that's the intent, the idea behind it is that some of that gets recruited when the property gets sold. And just the, the, the balance of the costs at this point is that the properties.
You had three years of back taxes on a $10,000 property being replaced for in the future with $150,000 or $200,000 or $400,000 property.
So.
And stabilizing the neighborhood.
Right.
And it's really a problem in those areas where we have all these properties that had to be easily sold so the neighborhood could never be stabilized.
That's right.
Because it's just vacant buildings.
Yeah.
Right?
So it's, um, it's going to be a slow, it's going to be a slow thing. It's not going to, it's, it, this, this thing has literally just been, essentially been born. So it's going to have to, it's going to have to try out some stuff. It's going to probably try to start small and then scale up as, you know, with trial and error. But the, the point of, it is a real opportunity that it done well. And hopefully stabilize communities that are just starting to see increased vacancies. Because if you can, if you can, if you can sort of intercept vacancy before it starts to, before it starts to spread, like the difference between, we, we've done this, we've done some internal analysis, like the area of Carsonville area, which is around the MetroLink stop.
Oh, yeah, the MetroLink, the select stop.
Okay, it is informally frequently called Carsonville. There's a couple of like just random vacant, tax delinquent parcels, like this is a real good place to say, let's intervene in this community that only has a handful of these. Because building up is like the Castle Points of the world, where you've got like 50 blocks. Yeah. Vacancy and tax delinquency becomes a different, it becomes a different scale of like tax.
I wouldn't like take this sideways, but to just say, when somebody comes out and says, we're clearing up all these properties at once, then that's going to give investors confidence to go in there. Whereas if you're the lone person trying to renovate a property.
One random house in the middle of a.
In the same, where there are no comps to justify what you're doing and you can't get a loan for a new buyer because of the appraisal process. Whereas now, say, you get them all in one area, which I never thought about till now, now we can get appraisals because we can get counts.
It's going to hurt small.
It could, it could really be a big deal.
There you go. County Department of Revenue is going to have a role and the collector has a named role in the process because it will be the collector that provides the land bank with the list of parcels that are, that can be taken into the land bank. So there's going to have to be changes, idea, you know, how are we going to restructure? I don't want to say restructuring, that sounds more, maybe sounds bigger than I really mean, but like, to make the 141 process work, there's going to have to be changes in Department of Revenue. There's going to be a lot, there, so the, the getting the land bank off the ground, it's a big, daunting, but it's exciting. So.
And I was going to say, the rollers were in out there, which had a wrong, that they were like groups too.
Absolutely, well, and again, the land bank coalition has been helping, which went along with, from the league, sure, being a, Charlie came to, he was at several of our, he was at our meeting on Friday and our meeting on Tuesday for the land bank board. So, so with Kevin Lindo, he's been at everyone in the meetings, like he sat there, we were doing the interviews with the possible candidates. He sat there giving his statements. He used to be state representative and then, I don't know, I don't know where Kevin Curse works.
He did work in Wash U.
Yeah, that's right, he was a, he was an instructor at Wash U.
I don't think he was an instructor, but he worked here.
Yeah.
An instructor.
Yeah. And then like Rachel Waterman from Legal Services of Eastern Missouri. It's been, it was a, it's been a good group that's.
Can I say one more thing?
We've got like four minutes.
Okay, well, the other thing about the whole appraisal process is it keeps current homeowners who want heat locks to improve their property from getting them, because there's no comps to justify the price they need. So even by getting any renovation in their neighborhood, now current homeowners can get renovation money to fix up their homes if they put the get full. So it can also impact.
How many different groups were involved?
In starting up the land bank? Oh, I.
Was she next through?
To be honest, I don't, a lot, they were all, and I mean, to even get it started, this all started at the state. The state statute had to be passed to create this, because this is a different, this is a different entity than the city of St. Louis's or Kansas City's land banks. So we.
It's everybody except them.
Basically, so like St. Louis County, you know, we've stood ours up. Springfield is looking, I don't know whether they stood theirs up or are just looking at it. But it, it opens the opportunity for, I don't know if it says just counties or municipalities, it must say municipalities too. But I, I can, I'm only going to speak for St. Louis counties and our, the land bank is for, it's not just unincorporated. It is for all 523 square miles of the county. So the, the land bank, and it's the only land bank that can exist in the county. There can't be like a land bank for just a field or.
So you guys, you guys do cover municipalities on that.
Yes.
How come that? State legislation.
True.
But how can you, I guess, the municipalities, are they run through the county for like the revenue department? When you use a list of.
Oh, also, county Department of Revenue collects taxes, collects taxes for every tax restriction in St. Louis, every single one. So whenever you pay your tax bill, that's why your tax bill says St. Louis County on it, even though really at the end of the day, only about 5% of that money comes back with this building, 95% of it goes out to school districts, district school district, or name it. You name it, it goes to. Well, I don't know about that. So, but the, the, why this forward, like for our zoning, we only have zoning authority in unincorporated. The county has other, like this is one of those bodies, one of those entities that does have authority even within the territorial limits of the municipalities. So. Mel, I have 544.
Uh, go get your little refill, whatever you need. And then when we come back in, I'll ask Mr. Taylor to gavel us in for the work.
And I will move out of the way to.
Ms. Williams, can you hear us all right?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
Before we all get started, I'd actually like to introduce Baricon Shigah. Baricon is one of the members of the land bank board. And so when we were chatting at our last meeting, we were telling, we were talking about how we're going to be doing this mentorship training session with you all. So I appreciate you, because I, because I'm in the position of Mr. Taylor, at least until the point at which the, the landing board selects a chair. And I, now having been a chair for, chair for three meetings, parliamentary rules are hard. Running a meeting is hard. This is my, that was, it's been my first time ever running a meeting. So thank you, Mr. Shigah, for, for joining us. There, there's two additional members to come. Oh, are there? Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I have 546.
For this parliamentary training, planning commission work session two quarter. Take role, please.
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum. I can take it away?
Begin.
Okay. It's me, it's Mel, the deputy director. And we are here, Jacob's my, uh, my lovely assistant, but I will mainly be taking you through what we're calling our parliamentary training. This is, I, I, I've learned a lot too. There's a lot to know, but to give you a sort of taste of what we're going to talk about here, I'm going to kind of just start with a really broad introduction. We'll talk about the basic principles and procedures that are part of St. Louis County as an organization just by default. And then we'll talk a lot about what Robert's Rules of Order have to say. And then talk about how the principles in Robert's Rules of Order can be applied to planning commission items. So at the end, I've got an old agenda that we can sort of see these, see, see how these are applied to them. So before we really get into it, I want to do like a temperature check, a little vibe check and hear from the members, what you think about the commission's current ability to conduct their business. This is a really open-ended question, so. Do you think things go well?
I think we're doing very well.
I think we're doing pretty well, everything seems to be orderly and there's a structure and procedure for members to communicate and members of the public to provide feedback on things.
I feel like they've improved over the last couple of years, honestly. I feel like a couple of years ago, there were more questions about when to have discussions and what needs to happen with the recommendations that the staff brings up. I know if, when I was, you know, new here, I was like, what does this mean? What, you know, I wasn't sure what the process was and finally figured it out. But I feel like it's going smoother.
Any other thoughts?
Two, two things. Follow what you said, because I don't know if when we're making a motion, sometimes if it's a motion based on what the resident has asked for or what the staff is suggesting. And my concern with Robert's rule says that if we don't follow them, somebody's going to come back in the future and say, you didn't follow them, that's inappropriate, you really didn't make that decision. And then they're going to stumble on some contempt, or they'll double, double guess us or whatever.
Sure. Which Mel, there's a point.
Hey, don't spoil anything!
As far as vibe check, the only thing that, that I sometimes am curious about is the timing that each person has to speak, right, in the group. And sometimes it seems we enforce that and other times it doesn't seem that we do.
You're talking about like a public hearing?
Yeah.
Sure.
That portion.
Sure, yeah. Ms. Williams, do you have any comments?
Um, I like that the board is so diverse. That you have people from different professional backgrounds. And so we, we have some interesting questions sometimes. I know I raise a lot of questions, so I like the diversity of the board.
I have one more thought, and I may be totally out of line, but it seems like sometimes there's a lot of verbiage at the beginning or middle. Like it feels like we have to read off a lot of things, the direction, the steps, and it just seems like two pages worth of introduction before we can get a meeting started. I didn't know if there's any way that that could be shortened at all. I know some of it has to be explained, you have to tell the public what we're doing in our meeting, but it feels like a lot sometimes to get going on the meeting.
No, I, I hear that. It, there is a criticalness that we do have to be, and we have to state it at every meeting. You have to restate certain procedures. Now, that's not to say that the commission, especially that the chair, we couldn't see whether some of that could be tightened up, because it is, especially for public hearing, when you enter, like when you, for your executive meetings, it's just, we're here to conduct the business of the board, first item, kind of basic kinds of things. But public hearing does have a pretty long preamble before you get started.
For sure, I think it'd be short and that'd be cool.
Yeah, I hear that, I hear a lot of things I agree with as well. I think this is a really healthy, really effective board. I hear also some opportunities to be even more streamlined, even more clear with how the board takes their, takes their actions. So I appreciate those comments. To sort of set this, oh, please go ahead.
Talking about what's clear and what's not clear, and maybe going in the right direction. John right over there always puts us in the right path if we're going that the wrong way.
Yeah, and I'm going to try not to ask John to like insert himself at all, but if he needs to insert himself at a closed session, have to fact another day, you know. But we won't ask you to pontificate on any, on anything here. Yes, and that, like, I'm glad you said that because, and we'll talk about it a little bit more, but that's some of our, our role as the staff of the planning commission as well is to make sure that you have all of the equipment, knowledge you need to, to accomplish the, the task you've been given. And how you're accomplishing task, that task is at what's called, as what's called a deliberative body. So the planning commission, a lot of the planning, or excuse me, a lot of the county's boards and commissions are what we would consider a deliberative commission, where a group of people comes together for a, a common purpose in one space where everyone has basically equal power to add to it. Each member can vote the way they want, each member has one vote. And members of this deliberative, deliberative assembly can attend meetings, make motions, speak during discussion and, and dispose of motions or vote. I would note that the planning department staff are not part of this deliberative assembly. So we can't deliberate with you, we can only act as what's called the parliamentarian, deputy train officer to help, to help guide the members as they, as they do their work. So why is it important to have parliamentary procedures? As we kind of stated, it, it, I think we can all agree that it's helpful to have a framework within, to operate within. So parliamentary procedures are intended to be the method by which you're, you're conducting your business to deal with common issues or types of matters as they come before you. It's an agreed way to address those items and it helps balance the rights of all the members. Sure, some people are officers or not, but being an officer makes your one vote more powerful. So that's the real, real introduction. And then please, um, let me know if you have any questions throughout. We can, you know, do plenty of questions at the end, but if there's any clarification you need as we kind of go through, just say the word. So as I said, look, there's us in this room. As I said at the beginning, there are some things that are already sort of codified and some things that we've already kind of established as a group that come from the charter, that come from the county code of ordinances, the commission's bylaws, and then Robert's rules themselves. So I've just copied and pasted what's in the charter section that basically calls for the creation of the, the planning commission. And what I've highlighted in bold here is sort of a kind of voting procedure that I would highlight. This is where it says that if this planning commission makes a recommendation for approval of a change in zoning, the county council, county council can't pass an ordinance to the contrary, except with a two-thirds majority. That helps empower this commission to be that advisory group and not be you know, kind of a perfunctory body that just moves things along. It helps give your, your decisions, your actions a little bit of teeth. Also, then we move to chapter 1001. As you may recall, chapter 1003 is the zoning ordinance, but if you backpedal two chapters earlier, chapter 1001 is called Department of Planning. It similarly has a couple of, of relevant bits of information. The first being that this chapter calls for the director of planning to be the chief advisor for really all county bodies on planning and zoning matters, including the planning commission. This section, or this chapter also includes the same bit about the council not being able to adopt an ordinance to the contrary. But chapter 1001 is also where it says that for the commission to take an action, you need a majority vote. So that is really, that's not, that's not terribly much to go on. So building on top of what's in the charter and what's in the code, many bodies, including this planning commission, then adopt bylaws, which are the specific ways that you've decided you as a body are going to take your action, conduct your meetings, the rights, the responsibilities of members, et cetera. So you can see here, the, I don't know, 10 or so articles of the planning commission's bylaws. And there are a couple of things in the bylaws I would call out. First, in the article about executive meetings, the planning commission has decided to use Robert's Rules of Order as our parliamentary procedures for all of the meetings as, you know, except as otherwise specified. And that's important because, we'll talk about it a couple of times, but Robert's Rules of Order are also just sort of a foundational document. And you can, as a body, supersede things that are in here by making them explicit in your bylaws. Also in the bylaws, there's two instances where a parliamentarian of sorts is alluded to. The first is actually the secretary has some, has the option to perform some parliamentary duties. And by parliamentarian, we're talking about the ability to understand, interpret and apply what's in the rules of parliamentary procedure. But primarily, the director of planning fills that role. So in the last, second to last section of the bylaws, there's a couple of duties bestowed upon, in this case Jacob. And one of them is that the director of planning shall provide parliamentary assistance to the chair of the commission. So that's why the director of planning sits there right next to the chair at the meetings to be able to be that guide to answer some of those questions that the members may not. To answer some of those questions that the members may not um, have the answers to themselves. Any questions at this juncture? Right. So then digging into Robert's Rules, um, I can't remember when, it was like the middle of the twentieth century. I think Mr. Robert was like a army general or something. Um, so they originally, he. Uh, originally drafted this guide to help, I suppose, sort of like bodies within the armed forces be able to conduct their business. But since then, it is the most common guide to parliamentary procedures, I think, in, in North America. Right, in English, for sure. Um, so it is written primarily to help volunteer groups like this. Um, they're not, typically it's not about legislative groups. It's about sort of volunteer, um, more advisory type groups. But you'll see legislative bodies use Robert's Rules as well. I think that um, so I think what Ms. Hancock said. It's important to note that Robert's Rules are not about what is legal or what is illegal. They are just about how to conduct your business. Um, I don't think it's inappropriate to try to, you know, adhere to these, these rules and procedures. If the commission has said that that's what they're going to use. Um, but it is not, the rules in this book are not about what is. Uh, in compliance or what is against the law. So primarily what we're looking at here are the organization of the rights of the members. Primarily what Robert's Rule says is that the majority rules, um, but because it's one person, one vote. That means that the minority still has that opportunity to dissent on the record. Um, it also clarifies in the basic principles of Robert's Rules that voting is limited to members present. So the fundamental pre- principles are members who are present can vote. They vote on one thing at a time and one person equals one vote. And then as I said, um, I think it's important to note that that's the foundation. Anything that the commission wants to. Instill on, you know, above and beyond that, you can do so, but the bylaws are the instrument or the vehicle for that um, specificity or any of those sort of special cases. So, how do we take care of business?
You know, saying. Taking care of business. I'm not known as a singer, y'all.
I uh, I dissent.
Put me on the spot. Well, I like that, I thought we were joking.
It wasn't like this in the dry run. Um, so to deal with a matter, the business of the board, um, there's a couple of principles I've called out here. The first one is not one that this Planning Commission typically um, or at least as far as I can tell, has engaged with, which is what's called. General consent or unanimous consent. Uh, we'll talk primarily about motions. What are the pieces of a motion? How does one make a motion? Consideration, is the board really discussing the matter on the table? And then voting is the way that we dispose of a motion. And I have learned there are many ways to dispose of a motion besides it passing or it failing. So first unanimous consent, what Robert's Rules say is that unanimous consent or a consent agenda. Is for items that are really minor and you're not expecting anyone to have any opposition or any sort of um, need any discussion about it. So I think a good example of this that we'll sort of drill into later is something like the Planning Commission's minutes, which. Are prepared in an expert fashion by Bennett, so there's hardly ever, if any corrections that need to be made. The Chair could start the meeting and say, you know, first on the order of business or the minutes from the previous meeting, are there any objections? If there are no objections, none, you know, hearing none, the minutes are adopted as written. That's not how this commission operates right now, but that's the premise of the consent agenda.
That sounds like it would be faster.
I, yeah.
The one thing I know about Paula, speed is.
She's got like a cocktail hour app for every meeting or something to get to, so.
We have some work to do.
That's true, you are a, she's not bossy, she's the boss. I love that. I almost said that about you the other day. So anyway, unanimous consent, I do think is an interesting tool from the, the toolbox that. A body like this Planning Commission could certainly consider.
What about the letters that we?
Oh, girl. Sorry. You're, you're. Same track. We're all on, we're all on the same page though. I like.
Go back and add to that.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll come back to when we apply our, the principles we've learned to that past agenda. We'll talk about. Um, what, what we think that would look like, because I think you're certainly right. Um, but we'll dig into that a little more. So talking about motions, motions are how you get things on the table for discussion. Uh, if something hasn't been moved for discussion, you really shouldn't be discussing it. Uh, primarily, and I'm gonna contradict myself in like three minutes, but there can really only be one motion on the table at a time. This helps keep the board focused on, first of all, the agenda and the specific question in front of them at that time. The Chair of the Commission, in our case, or of a board typically does not make motions. They're typically just entertaining motions. Opening up the floor and saying, it's time for a motion. Will someone make one? Now, of course, the Chair can vote and the Chair can be part of discussion, but typically the Chair is not the one to make motions. So you'll hear Mr. Taylor say, at this time I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there such a motion? And then a member would say, so moved, or a member would say, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move for adjournment.
And philosophically, that's about the leader of the team giving full and equal um, ability to all the other members. To, to make their statements known, rather than.
Oh, and the leader.
Right, rather than being in a situation in which um, as a chair, uh, he or she. You know, exercises an undue influence over the sort of deliberations of the body. That's why a chair will allow their members. To discuss first, but a chair can then jump in into the discussion um, as necessary.
But if a chair doesn't get any of its members to participate, then they can make a.
That's right. There is no, there's no absolute prohibition.
Right.
Yeah, another board of some wrong, very often we try to entertain a motion to which our, no one says anything, so the chair.
They don't leave, you're like, no, I'm not adjourning.
I don't get that. Yeah, but typically, in, in our, in our experience here, uh, Mr. Taylor typically does not make motions. He entertains them. Um.
And that's pretty consistent across.
Yes, that's common.
Yes.
I think a couple of things that are a little, as they're written here, are a little different than how this commission operates. Is that members really should only be making a motion after you've been recognized. So there's a bit of a pause that exists in Robert's Rules that doesn't quite exist in our Planning Commission right now. Where it should really be, you know, Mr. Chair, and then Keith would say, you know, Commissioner Wilson. Pretending I'm a board member, and then I would say, you know, I moved to blah de da de da. Um, but we right now are, we're just so congenial in a way that I think has a lot of benefits, but that's something I think could be. Uh, something we kind of tailor as well is, is creating that space for that formal recognition to happen. And I think the other thing is that what um, Robert's Rules say is that a motion is always supposed to be in the affirmative. Um, is there a motion to, to recommend approval of PCO one twenty-five, uh, rather than. I move to deny or recommend denial. A motion should always be made in the affirmative. And I think logistically, why that's important and helpful. I think to another point, I think uh, Ms. Hancock, that you said, it, it helps make it clearer what your vote is actually doing. If the motion is always in the affirmative, you know, if I support it, I'm voting aye. If I don't support it, I'm voting nay. So the way to deny something, a motion would be, a motion for approval would be on the table, and if the members all vote nay. That is how a, a member would be, or excuse me, a motion or a matter would be denied. And we'll talk a lot of, we can dig into that a little bit more.
And that, that other item before that, which could be a, a denial for approval or a denial of denial.
Sure, I mean.
I mean, because I'm just gonna make it a recommendation, you know, the recommendation of looking for motion. Of the recommendation of the staff.
Right, so even if the.
Could be approval or denial.
Right, so if the staff's recommendation is to deny something, you could still say, you know, is there, is there a motion to recommend approval of this?
And then I should say, of the now.
It would be, I think it's one of those things where we'll wanna kind of do these test cases as different items come along, just like I think to kind of test. Um, your idea, um, Ms. Hart, about using the consent agenda for letters of approval. I think there are a couple weird things that we would need to make sure we're prepared for. Um.
So I wanna, because I wanna build on that Mel, but I also wanna go to, back to that recognition. And, and the point of recognition in a body, when you're in a body like this, is. It's meant to slow down discussion a little bit, and the reason being is so that there's not a lot of crosstalk. And the intent of the body is not necessarily for you and you to get into a crosstalk debate with one another. Um, and that is the recognition of members is intended to slow down the discussion. Especially in those moments where uh, members may be in disagreement with one another. So then it, it naturally puts a little bit of a tempering perhaps on the way that members speak. If it's something that members are really passionate about, or they have highly divergent views from one another. Um, and it also redirects the conversation in a way that you're not, it's, again, it's not about member, you know, member. Harry and member Bedell having an argument, it's about trying to dispose of the item in front of us. Um, so that, what, that's philosophically in some ways what recognition of, of members is intended to do and why that's the. Why Robert's Rules has that as the way that it, it recommended and, and has the discussion inside of it. Um, and then going, the, the other item, um, you know, Mr. Taylor is. I think we're actually gonna get into it, which is we, we are going to showcase perhaps a different way that motions get onto the table for things for the commission. Um, that, that Mel has some examples for, because the intent is to be really clear about. How, what does a motion mean?
What is my vote doing?
Right, um, that is perhaps not going to be immediately tied to the staff's recommendation. That the staff's recommendation perhaps should be part of the commission's discussion, and then.
Right.
And then so I.
I think that will be illuminated, yeah.
Right, as a, as a, for you all to consider, because by the way, what I also want to say is that. It is ultimately this deliberative assembly's responsibility to determine how you want your meetings to be with, with Mr. Taylor as the key decider. And as Ms. Hancock is sort of his, his vice chair to determine how the meetings um, should operate. So in some ways, we're bringing things to you, but ultimately, we're gonna, we're gonna help you all run the meetings the way that you all want meetings.
In my research, oh, please go ahead.
I was gonna say, if, if we have to wait to make a motion to be called on. Then especially when we're on Zoom, you would actually know who made the motion. Which I think sometimes it's hard.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. Um.
Didn't mean to get you off your.
No, 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 something that I, I don't think I put on a slide at all, but something I saw a, about how um. As the wording of a motion becomes more important and there's more hinging on it. I've read about boards where a member makes some, verbally makes a motion, but then they also write it down. And then they hand it to the chair, so the chair can say, okay, the motion on the table is to, you know, and they read it directly, so then there's no confusion. Um, about what the, the motion-making member. Right, it's complex.
Well, where we're probably already motion for approval, and then we're gonna back it back out. Say that again, okay.
Yeah.
Motion made.
Yeah.
And then there's discussion, and we decide we're not going here.
Yeah, so, yeah, yes, their motion can be, a motion has to be disposed of.
That's right, so then you have to ask the, this first person to.
I'll get into that.
Motion, and the second person to pull back their.
It's actually, I don't, that's how the, that's how the commission's operated. That's not exactly what Robert's Rules said, but there's a bit that we'll get to about, literally about amending motions, because that is something that the commission does. Um, frequently, uh, and so we can talk about sort of the current state and then the, the Robert's Rules state, if you will, um, for certain.
So what he's talking about, that would be kind of like tabling, Mac?
You're not really tabling that because you, well, you are, you are, but you, you've got it.
You're jumping ahead.
You have to take out your, you gotta take the motion back out.
So, in general, this is how, you know, the board takes care of business, the commission takes care of business. The matter, you know, on the agenda has been like right into the record. A member is recognized by the Chair. Once they're recognized, they make the motion, another member seconds it. And then there's discussion or consideration of that motion, and then that motion is disposed of. Um. And I didn't put vote here because there's so many ways apparently to dispose of a motion besides just voting it up or down. But let's talk a little bit about consideration, or what we sometimes I think colloquially in this commission call discussion. Um, all, as we kind of uh, alluded to a little bit as we've been chatting, is that all. Remarks should really be addressed to the Chair and sort of filtered through the Chair. As Jacob was saying, that helps keep. Uh, crosstalk to a minimum, that also really prevents the ability for anyone to interrupt anyone else. Um, it also keeps the, it, it helps just keep things, I think slowing things down is a really good way of describing it. Um, to help everything just happen in a little bit more thoughtful of a manner. It is though, the opportunity for commission members to ask clarifying questions, really first of the Chair. But if the Chair doesn't know the sort of process or procedural answer, that's where the administrative officer or the parliamentarian comes in. To give that technical advice, you know, not to give our, our, really our opinion, aside from what's in the report, but to give that technical advice and any of that clarification. When a motion is on the floor, that's also the opportunity to amend it if need be, um, which we'll dig into a little bit more later. But then, this is something that also is, I think something that Mr. Taylor does frequently. But we haven't necessarily formalized in like our script, for instance, is restating the motion right before the vote. I do think you do that um, often, but that is an important part of. Consideration, because it once again makes extremely clear to everyone in the Assembly what is being considered, what your vote is accomplishing. And then disposing of the motion or taking the vote. So this is a flow chart of sort of the typical process. First, you're, this is a, a bit evolved from that linear one I showed. You're recognized by the Chair. You make the motion. If the motion's seconded, you get to have consideration. If the motion isn't seconded, even at a motion to adjourn. There's no second, it can't be considered, so there's no conversation. If the motion is seconded, consideration typically results in either a majority of votes in favor of the motion, which means the motion passes. Or a majority of votes in opposition to the motion, which means it fails. The other ways of disposing of a motion are um, a, a matter could be referred to the committee. It could be referred to. Um, the Comprehensive Planning Committee. There's the, technically the commission has an Ordinance Review Committee. There's also the Committee of the Whole, which is just the committee version of the full. Um, Planning Commission. You could also in theory refer to an ad hoc committee. I think the example we made earlier was. Say the commission's going back and forth about, do we require enhanced landscaping for this development or not? And we can't, uh, the, you know, the board, the commission can't, can't get to agreement there in the meeting. Someone could refer that matter to an ad hoc committee on enhanced landscaping. And then how to bring the, that motion back to the table for consideration if it's referred to a committee, is the committee report at a subsequent executive meeting. And then there are two ways to sort of just consider a motion later. The first is postponement, which means you know that it date and time certain that you were going to bring it back for consideration. Or tabling something really means that it, it has to be brought back up for consideration before the end of the next meeting, and if it's not, it's dead. And those are three types of what are called subsidiary motions. So everything before that, when we're just talking about. I move to recommend approval, that's what we just call the main motion, the primary motion. These subsidiary motions. Uh, can occur while the meat, main motion is on the table. So there, you can see postpone, postpone indefinitely, but amend, amending a motion is the primary subsidiary motion. That this board, this Planning Commission um, uses. I don't know why I'm saying board so much.
Because you've been, because you've been helping me with the land base.
That's probably why, yeah.
Mel, so, so can the, to amend it, that can only be by the person who.
No.
So, so someone else could amend something that was.
Yeah, so, if a motion's on the table, say I make a motion to. That after this, we go to a good, a good cocktail restaurant. That's my motion. And say Jacob thinks that's not quite right, I wanna amend that motion. Anyone can move to amend the motion. So that's what, when we have sort of two motions on the table, they can happen at the same time. Anyone can move to amend a motion. The motion to amend has to be seconded. But any member can move to second. That amendment. So that's where it's a little bit different than how we've operated. I think how we've operated is very um, like we formalized it and we've been consistent where we've. Come back to the original person who made the first and the second to say, does that sound good to you? And I think that's a very consistent application of what we've done, but this is a, what Robert's Rules say is a, is a little different than that. And it is, there's one piece that in my uh, interpretation of it, we've sort of been missing that we'll get to. So anyway. Someone can make a motion, anyone can move to amend that motion, and anyone can second that uh, motion to amend.
And when we. First second, though, that.
What happens if it had, it had been seconded? What happens if it had, it had been seconded?
So the first motion was moved and seconded, and then we're having discussion, right?
Didn't we?
Yeah, and so we're having discussion about. Main motion, correct, correct. So main motion is made and seconded, and then we're on discussion. Then any member could make an additional, the subsidiary motion.
I move to amend.
To amend member Wilson's motion.
Anybody can second, so anybody can amend and anybody can second.
Correct, correct. An amendment is sort of um it it's kind of narrow amendments to a motion or should really be just adding or striking words. Um we'll talk a little bit about a process for making larger changes. That doesn't typically uh won't typically impact this planning commission. But if you're adding a word or striking a word in the motion to amend, you must also locate that change. So let's look at this example. So I made a motion to um that we go to a a good cocktail restaurant afterwards. Someone seconded it, and now the matter is on on the table for discussion. So then Jacob could say, I move to amend the resolution by inserting the word very before the word good. So the chair would then say, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, so that it would read move to go to a very good cocktail restaurant after this meeting. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. That vote just adopts the amended language. It doesn't pass or fail whatever that language said. The first one is just to adopt that amended language. That's the piece that we've been missing, is we've just been amending motions. We haven't been adopting, I say we, the royal we, um the commission hasn't been adopting that amended language. They've just been disposing of it with the amendment. So it should really then be, okay, the eyes have it, the amended, the amendment is adopted, and the question is on the resolution amended, which is a motion to go to a very good cocktail restaurant after the meeting. And then the body votes on that amended motion to truly dispose of it. Yes.
I have a question. So there's no discussion on the.
There could still be, there could still be discussion on the motion to amend.
Oh, so there could be discussion on the motion to amend.
Yeah, right, between this uh, you know, this mo- this member one moves, there would be the second and then the discussion, and then the chair would call.
Making the motion might want to explain themselves.
Oh, certainly, certainly, yeah.
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 I don't want it to just be good, I want it to be tonight's celebration.
It's not a mug's night, y'all, it's a high bar.
There we go, it's not a mug's night, it's.
For mocktails. Um so I think that's um something that is different from how the commission currently operates, because we do frequently um tweak sort of a motion. And the formal process would be to truly adopt that amended motions language before disposing of it. Any questions, any other questions, thoughts?
Well, can I just go back to something you said in the beginning?
Yeah.
If so, we have bylaws and say we should follow this. And if we don't follow Robert's rules, then can anyone come back later and say there wasn't discussion on this, as I don't see it?
I believe it said it was a guideline. It's pretty.
Is it a guideline?
I mean, while we have an attorney in the room that could most.
I told him I wouldn't.
That we're not gonna call on him, and especially because the county council's office really prefers to have uh give legal advice within.
My, my opinion.
Picture is that if say, I I think the biggest fear is like, say, there was a lawsuit.
Yeah.
That somebody sued us because we didn't follow the proper procedure. Say you recommend approval and a move a zoning and a zone, a zoning issue through the process. And then they come back and file a suit and say, you didn't run your meeting as per Robert's rules. The issue is, is that if it's just a minor, if it's just a minor procedural issue, that's not really gonna, that's not gonna win them a court case.
Yeah.
It's gonna be if this board was operating in a way that was actually hiding information or where the operations were so out of whack that you, they couldn't even make a determination that you actively lawfully voted to get it. That's and that's where Mel was saying that these are not, this is not like, this is not determining law for us. This is how do we operate um our rules for 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 us as a board?
But if you've decided this is how we operate, and then in a way that is arbitrary and capish- capricious, you don't use this, I think that's dangerous. Um it, what I think is true, though, is that if the board, if the commission, et cetera, the body is not operating per their bylaws, I think that's sort of um initially kind of a self accountability thing that the members should call out amongst themselves, be hopefully before it ever creates a situation where someone in the public is going to um.
They operate consistently in the same fashion.
That adds a lot to it.
Yes.
We don't, so that's not anything that's controversial and not have let people express their opinion.
Because one of the things too is that boards are given a certain amount of expectation of it. You say that you have passed this per your own rules, and it's just like someone else's interpretation that you made a minor mistake to Rob- to Robert's rules. That's not going to, that's not gonna, that doesn't impact the validity of the decisions that the body has made.
Thank you. What I also think is true is that there may be warrant for a Robert's rule two oh one. Cause there are some other fun facts I've learned, but what I felt, and I don't think I said this to you as I was going through this, is this is mostly applicable to the executive meetings. The planning commission's public hearings, because they're not um, they're not executive, there's not like a vote being uh, you know, happening. It's not, I don't, I haven't quite seen exactly how a meeting like a public hearing folds into this framework. Because this doesn't really account for something like public comment, at least as as in my research so far. Um so I think that what I'm sharing today is mostly applicable to executive meetings, committee meetings, business meetings of the of the commission. I do think there is certainly overlap, but I don't find that um, I find it's most applicable to the executive meetings.
So if you, if it was more of a a larger amendment, not a minor amendment, would you assume that the chair should ask the person who made the first motion to withdraw their motion because it's complex? Like if it's, if it's a larger amendment that involves too many other things?
I think it would be the chair's discretion to say, this is a little too much for an amendment. We need to consider a substitute motion. Because um I find that most of the work before the planning commission right now, uh there, the motions are pretty simple. They're, you know, and by simple, I mean short. Um this process that we're gonna go through is about for rewording beyond those simple changes. Like if it's like, we need to get rid of this paragraph and replace it, this is the process for this. I do think it's important to note, because as especially as STL Co. twenty fifty is on the adoption path, I see the role of this commission broadening a bit um and being about more than just just zoning processes. So I can see a world where there are longer motions or resolutions that the commission makes where this process may be more applicable. What the book says is that you should always try to amend a motion before you consider substitution. Um I don't have an instance of a motion that would warrant substitution that this body has seen. But the process is generally similar. Someone moves to, you know, put a motion on the table, that motion is seconded, we'll call that um motion A is on the table, it's debated, maybe it is amended, or maybe it can't really be amended. So then a second member, or I guess a third member, if you will, says, I move to substitute the motion for, you know, this paragraph of language that they read. The chair puts the question to the body of whether, of which one, do we want to replace it with motion B? Yes or no? That is just to kind of like the amended language, just to do that replacement, just to actually swap out the language. If it is adopted, great, then you dispose of motion B. If it's not adopted, the commission goes back to motion A and then votes to dispose of motion A. So it's similar. My, I think the main difference is that like, if motion B doesn't pass, motion A is still there. Whereas if you've adopted the amended language of the motion, you've adopted it, and then you dispose of it. So there are a few other types of subsidiary motions. I mentioned postponing, which is, say, uh, you know, a a planning commission member receives the information report. There's a motion on the table, everyone's discussing approval, but there's just something complicated. And one member says, I need, I need more time to dig into this. I move to postpone consideration of this matter until the October fourth executive meeting. You need a second and all, you know, a a a vote to postpone an item. Postponing is for a date certain. Tabling is just to get it one meeting to the next meeting. So say we table something tonight at September, wait, yeah, at September's executive meeting. After like one piece of business has been um dealt with, a member could move to to bring back to the table whatever was set aside from the last meeting. Um limiting debate is something that I I I've not seen. I think that this commission typically um, you know, are their debates aren't terribly long. But say we can't, we can't crack the nut on that enhanced landscaping, and Paula's sick of it. Paula could say, I. She could, any member could say, I move to limit debate amongst the commission, or we debate that, we debate this for ten more minutes. And then if someone seconds it and that if that passes, then it would be the chair and, you know, the administrative officer's responsibility to be like, okay, well, it's been ten minutes. And then the chair would call the vote, call for the vote.
Debate has to be approved, seconded and approved.
Seconded and approved, right. And so that's for either a set period of time or a set number of speakers. Say, we'll hear from three more commissioners. Um and this is about debate amongst the commission, which is why I'm I'm glad I said what I did about the public hearing. This isn't about public hearing. Um then uh, you know, we can't crack the nut on that that landscaping, you can commit it. I'm like learning so much about the English language. I'm like, oh, you committed to the committee. That's, oh, I get it now. So you can send something to committee. Um if discussion has gone on forever, um and someone not named Paula doesn't even want to limit discussion, they just want it to end, a member can move to call the question. That means if, so a member can move to call the question, calling the question has to be seconded. But if that motion is made and seconded, there is no more discussion, and the chair immediately asks for the vote. The weird, the weird, the one thing that's a little bit different about calling the question, if you look at the cheat sheet, is that unlike most other motions that just need a majority, if somebody calls the question, it needs two thirds majority to pass. And I see that as a way to sort of balance that, like if somebody wants to end debate, it should probably.
Two thirds to call the question or the original motion?
So if the motion's on the table um to approve, to recommend approval of a petition, it's been seconded, it's being discussed. We've been discussing it for fifteen minutes, and then uh you're, I'll shoot, you're my guinea pig right now. Uh Commissioner Hart says, I move to call the question, and Mr. Bedell seconds it. That vote to dispose of that motion that was on the table would then need two thirds majority to pass.
Immediate.
So it's like um immediately.
Suppose of my motion now.
No, your motion is done, it's just to, it's to force the vote on the motion.
Right.
You don't vote on my motion.
And so it's sort of like um.
You can unilaterally make, make it require a motion, require two thirds approval to pass.
Till then, because you're wanting.
If you're cutting off debate.
Keep shut off the debate.
Just shutting off the debate.
Paula shut off the debate by calling the question, she's rolling the dice.
She's, yeah, there's a risk in it then.
Right.
All right, because usually when this, well, usually when this happens, it's uh Jeff City or some other.
Yeah, but I'm just not following that.
Sure, so I make, I'm, I move that we recommend approval of PC oh one twenty five. Jacob seconds it, we're having discussion for, you know, fifteen minutes. And then Paula, you know, she, she thinks, she thinks there's enough that's been discussed.
Yeah.
And I suspect that she would also think it's going to pass. So the fact that if she calls the question, we need, say, the board's full, five votes in favor instead of um or, sorry, I can't do math, six votes in favor instead of five. If someone's calling the question, they should probably be pretty sure that it's going to pass, because it it needs that extra teeth. And I think that's a balance of like allowing all the members to discuss for as long as they want versus a member's um.
But if you're against it and you call the question, then you're gonna force two thirds to approve it.
Well, the thing is, like, say you're against it, and you're trying to do something like that. If you say you're like, you just begin, you know, it's not seconded, that's because the body's like, we're not.
That's a good, yeah.
We're not.
Only two people.
That's true.
Vote on the motion to, to call the question.
That's true.
Saying there's no vote on that question.
That is a, yeah.
Forced to call this question.
You can force, you can force the end of the debate.
Right.
Right.
So if there's nine members, someone calls the question.
Split, though, like if you call, you see, I call a vote, if two thirds of people are one way and one thirds the other, that basically is just saying, I don't think it's half and half.
Two thirds either way, I suppose, yeah.
I mean, if there's a lot of discussion, you think that it's, you know, closer to fifty fifty. But I'm like, call the dang question, and I think that two thirds of the people at least will agree one way or the other. That makes it quicker.
Though you're saying it would have to be two thirds.
What happens if the vote isn't?
Or two thirds to deny?
Yeah.
To pack, right, to.
What if it's fifty fifty vote?
I might have to take that one for for parliamentary training two oh one slash the follow up, follow up email that I'll send.
I know, I understand. I'm just trying to.
I understand your question now, but I don't know the answer.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'll find out, because I'm curious.
I don't suspect we're gonna have much of that. Although what I will say is that you say in Jeff City, at the very first, I'm just, in it, uh at the land bank board, in the very first meeting, one of the members called the question.
There you go, on.
Yeah.
On a debate, and I just like, that was, that was one, and she was someone who had a lot of parliamentary experience. Um.
Uh that's because also some of these meetings get different length than people.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Because again, these rules are intended to give an orderly and efficient way to get as much deliberation as possible.
They should be used to manipulate the outcome and that.
That's true.
And I think that's why it wants the two thirds majority, that way you can't just be like, I want to go home, I'm gonna call the question.
Been two minutes, call the question.
But the interplay of like, what if you don't, I think is worth me finding the answer, so cer- I'll certainly will. So, no one called a question in the next couple of meetings until I figure out, I don't know, let me deal with it. And then what I sort of, what I'll characterize as like the softer version of calling the question is a member can call for the orders of the day, say that discussion has just sort of um, it it doesn't quite pertain to the agenda anymore, and a member notices that. A member can call for the orders of the day, and that sort of is a a cue to the chair to like look back at the agenda and be like, all right, let's bring it back to, let's bring it back to the order of business. Yeah.
There's a motion, I have to think back to that, it's like, is the motion, I move to close the debate, or I move to call the?
I'm, I move to call the question, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think I did sort of reverse that um, that one. So then there are a couple of what we would call privileged motions, and like so how subsidiary motions can kind of sit there with the main motion, privileged motions supersede that main motion, and there are only a few, um so we'll go through all of them. A member could move to fix the time of adjournment. Uh so that would be something like, I move that we adjourn at eight o'clock PM, no matter what. It's seconded, it's approved, then it would be incumbent on the chair and the, you know, administrative officer when eight o'clock comes around to entertain a motion for adjournment. The actual motion for adjournment is what is called a privileged motion. Uh so is a motion to take a recess, which is just taking a break. And then what we call questions of privilege, which you may be more familiar with as when people say point of order, that's a a question of privilege, that's a privileged motion. And these privileged motions are not debatable. And the chair, when someone's made a privileged motion, has to call for the vote immediately. So if a member moves for adjournment and it's seconded, it immediately is voted up or down for all four of these. That's the um, the process. So then I'm just got a couple of sort of clarification slash other items. Uh when a vote has been made, if a member is unsure of who made what vote, or maybe they're not sure if there were more ayes or more nays, someone could say, I call for a division of the house. And that's basically what triggers a roll call vote, which is where the administrative officer or someone, the secretary, reads each member's name, and they do their vote one by one. And the.
We're gonna, I was gonna say now, but in this, on this body, because we're such a collegial sort of collaborative body, I feel like the chair knows when's the right, when's the good time to ask for those roll call votes versus when's the time for the the, you know, um, just all call votes.
And we're of a, of a decent size to.
Right. So so what you're seeing here is um, I think that we really benefit from having a good team that works together and and is working in the best spirit possible to keep the, keep the meeting on track.
Yeah, these first two I could see in fury happening, the second two that I'll get to, I don't see those really happening much in this commission. But the point of order, especially if you look at your little cheat sheet, point of order, point of privilege is like, I don't think something's going right, or me personally as a member, something's like, I'm having some issue, and I have to interject um to let everyone know. I don't think something's going right, or me personally as a member, something's like, I'm having some issue and I have to interject, um, to let everyone know.
Uh, air conditioning.
Yeah, air conditioning, my internet's gone out.
The lights aren't working well.
There's a, the fire trucks out on my whatever, um, clar, clar, I need clarification on something. Those are point of order, point of inquiry. I think they also call it point of parliamentary privilege, um, all fall under that. And then the second two, a motion to reconsider. If a member has voted on something and they were on the winning side, but then for some reason they want to change their vote, they can move to reconsider if a majority agrees with that motion to reconsider. So it's a, as it says, the motion then comes back to the floor as if the vote had not occurred. I don't really see that happening much in this, in this commission, but Robert's rules, um, lay it out. And then sort of similar, uh, a motion to rescind is the mechanism by which to change a vote from an earlier meeting. What I'll say is right now, we don't notice the planning commission agendas, uh, to account for that at all. And what Robert's rules say is if previous written notice was given, you need a simple majority in order to rescind something from the past. If no notice is given, you need a two thirds majority to rescind. I also don't really see this happening in this commission, but you know, it sits there in Robert's rules. Um, in other boards, in larger, um, maybe more quasi legislative bodies, it's probably more common. And then as we said, we've really focused on how, you know, one motion on the table, one speaker at a time. But there are limited periods where it is appropriate or necessary to interrupt someone. Those are your point of order, your point of, uh, parliamentary inquiry. You're asking for clarification or you're asking for more information of something on the order of business. If you can't hear or see, or there's a safety issue, a member can exercise their point of privilege at any point. If you think that things are not going per the bylaws or Robert's rules or whatever, um, process everyone's agreed to, you can call a point of order, a point of order, Mr. Chair, you know, member so and so. You know.
Has broken the rule.
Yeah, it's broken the rules.
So then do you need to be, uh, called on by the chair or can you just throw that out there?
I think it'd be appropriate to say point of order and then, so you say point of order and then it says, Mr. Fagan, you're recognized.
Has the responsibility.
Right, correct.
When you say something like that, you're taking the, he, uh, the chair, he has the responsibility to, Mr. Fagan, yes, Mr. Fagan.
Um, say that, you know, we do a roll call or a, a voice vote and the chair says, okay, the eyes have it and you don't think that's what happened, you can appeal that, that's sort of a, uh, an interruption as well. And then as we talked about unanimous consent or to consent agenda, if you were to say, no, I think these minutes have an error, that's technically you objecting. So that's an interruption, an approved interruption. Any questions about that big chunk of the information? Otherwise, we're going to apply these principles to, um, an agenda. But I've noted here some of the things that are a little bit different than how the commission operates right now. And I want to say again that we're sharing this with you to give you more information so that you can, um, use it as you wish, because as Jacob said, it's, it's for the planning commission to decide how they want to operate their meeting. Sure, we've done it a certain way for a long time. But there are, um, things that can be changed, things that can be updated in order to make sure the commission is able to its, do its work most effectively. But to kind of put side aside what we've talked about and how it's a little bit different, right now, the commission doesn't have a unanimous consent agenda. My interpretation is that things like the meeting summaries and the committee reports and maybe even letters of recommendation could be put on a consent agenda. So at that time in the agenda, the chair would, um, read the matter into the record. Yeah.
How we've been doing it, I think it's, it's okay. It's, well, we do get some discussion, it gets a little length and there's nothing you can do about that. But to have it on the record that there was a motion and a second and everybody approved, even if it's, you know, uh, recommendations are, are the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely value to both ways.
So, okay, did you read the minutes?
Right. And. Yeah.
I, I would hope everybody has a chance to do that question.
Yeah, I want to just like open these, as if I'm opening a toolbox, just kind of show you what's in there. I, yeah. Because I don't think that, that the way it's been done is wrong at all. Um, this is just, this would be a slight different way. So consent agenda, um, I think there are a lot of boards and commissions who do have consent agendas, especially for things like minutes. Um, but then I think the main thing is about the motions. It would be, I think, a, a, a muscle to sort of work out for the commission to make sure we're always making motions in the affirmative, um, and to um, wait to be recognized. I guess that's just here in the next one. Um, I think I put this a little premature, but we'll talk about this. And then, um, the role of the parliamentarian wouldn't totally change, but if anything that the commission did, say you decided, um, we're going to have a consent agenda, we would be helping make sure that you are, uh, disposing of that consent agenda. You know, in line with what you've, what you've determined is the commission's process. Um, I want to pause here before I go into the examples because there's something I put that I don't think we discussed, but when we talk about, um, having a motion on the table before discussion, I think the commissioners can probably accept, you know, Ms. Perry, because you haven't really seen it yet. Um, that there's sort of this dance we do between like the staff presenting the recommendation and then not wanting to answer questions until there's a motion on the table. And so then we've looked into, is it, is it ever appropriate to have discussion before there's a motion on the table? And then in the Robert's Rules forum, they said, well, if you're taking a presentation from a presenter, you're already allowing discussion from the presenter before a motion is on the table. Um, and so one of the things we were sort of brainstorming earlier is if we decide that we want that to be clearer. And if we decide we're always making motions in the affirmative, something we could consider is that when the commission gets to the new business, um, consideration of petitions, the first thing would be to entertain a motion. So it's like, all right, next order, next on the order of business, uh, new business consideration of petitions. Is there a motion to recommend approval of PCO 125? Um, you know, petitioner body dotty. There's a first and a second. Okay, we'll now move into discussion. At the start, we'll hear a presentation from the planning department. So then you can be sort of engaging with the staff member as they give the presentation. You can move straight into asking those questions because the motion's already on the table and it's a motion in the affirmative. So then it helps make it clear that it's voting up or down, yes, for, no, against, because it's already on the table before, um, before the, the staff member ever stands up.
And just to clarify, that is or is not including the staff's recommendations of the staff recommendations, a motion to amend, to include the staff's recommendations.
So it would, so if, you know, it's a motion to recommend approval and if the, the staff report is also a recommendation of approval, easy peasy, whatever. If the staff's recommendation is for denial, the commission could then just vote down that motion. That would be agreeing with the staff recommendation. But then if it, if it's something between the two, between agreeing or disagreeing, then it would be appropriate to amend the motion for some of that clarity. I, you know, I moved to amend the motion to, um, you know, uh, recommend approval as written in the staff recommendation with the additional stipulation of X, Y and Z.
So that, you know, they need a taller fence, they need a.
But if that's already in, if that's in what we've written already, you wouldn't need to augment the motion to encompass that. But if we recommend, you know, one tree every 20 feet and you want two trees every 20 feet, you would, you would make a motion to amend the motion to add that enhanced landscaping. The body would adopt that motion and then dispose of it.
So the motion isn't for what the person of the public wants, it's what, the motion is for what the staff has recommended, right?
Well, that's what, what's being presented.
The, in this idea, it would be that the motion is always to recommend approval.
Of the recommendation.
Of any petition, of any zoning.
Of the request.
Which includes the recommendation by the staff.
So then it's going to require an amendment.
I would, and what I want to, and I want to choose out a little bit of a difference because the, the planning department's recommendation is actually, is not the same as your motion for recommendation of approval. You as a, as a matter, as a deliberative body would open the conversation of on this application in front of us, because that's legally what you have in front of you.
Right.
Legally have this application for a change in zoning or an amendment to the zoning map. That's legally what you have in front of you. So then your app, you, when you make that amendment or that motion, I, you know, we move to approve PCO 1 dash 25, you're approving that application to go to the, to the commission. So then what staff would do is we would.
Good.
The council, I'm sorry if I misspoke. The commission's sending that to the council. So then when you open up the discussion, the decision before you is to approve the application and send it to council. Staff would then get up, get up and give you a technical report, our best advice on what to do. And then we can tell you, we can, we think you should, or we think, we think you should approve it. Or we think you should deny it. But the motion that you're making is not co-analogous with exactly our, our recommendation is feeding your motion. Does that make a little bit more sense?
So we're making, we're making a motion and seconding a motion just to open up the PC.
That's correct.
Page and not actually voting up yet. We're just opening it up.
And then we discuss it.
And if they're going to.
Presentation, then you can discuss. And then your vote is to send a recommendation of approval now. Um, and it's not necessarily, you're not just voting to send a staff report to the council.
Right.
What you are doing is making a recommendation on a face is essentially what you're doing. Does that, maybe, does that make it more clear?
So how did the staff recommendations that would, staff recommendations get incorporated into the motion?
It's what, it doesn't have to. It's one, you, you wanted to.
If you guys say, we recommend approval barring these two things. And we say, I motion. I make the motion.
Yeah.
Move.
Uh, to vote on that and somebody seconds it. Does that bring the recommendation with it?
Yes. I mean, it takes, and I, one thing.
And I think. Sure, you're moving whether I'm moving.
And I think some of the, for me, I think some of the confusion is probably coming from also the fact that you're talking about the staff recommendation. But then there's ultimately the letter of recommendation that is your decision.
Is your.
And what I want to say is that like, I think even no changes made, I think it would be beneficial for everyone's understanding of this for us to produce what we, what are called motion sheets for the executive meeting. We don't change a thing. We, we, we still take up business the same way the commission has for the past, you know, 30 years or whatever. But we can create motion sheets that make it extremely explicit what it would, what the results would be. So there could be, um, the motion and then the impact of the motion, we can list out for you. I think that would be helpful. Um, just to help kind of apply some of these principles, even if we don't change a thing.
I have a question. So what we're talking about change here is just a matter of fact of doing a motion first and the second, but then.
Hearing from staff.
Having staffs. Playing, okay, a change for the PC. And then it was a, a recommendation approval of this project or the night.
Of the motion.
Yeah, but we didn't make the motion. I'm just.
Well, we made it first.
But now we're going to make a motion and second to open up the discussion about the change after they do their presentation. Then I would ask for the vote.
Mm-hmm. That's right. After discussion.
You're going to recommend of approval or denial of the motion?
Well, I want to, it's not of the motion, it's actually of the actual case. Like our recommendation is of the case, uh, of PCO 1.
How do we make the case to match the motion? How did, I just did not follow in it.
No, I.
Wait and see how it works.
I see, I see your train of thought too, like as I listen, I want to diagram it, you know?
Don't understand.
No, and I, I think I can see, I think I can see the way I would try to answer your question, but I think it would be slightly visual. So I've added it to my little list because I think this is also worth clarifying.
And I want to be.
For medial training.
No, it's actual credit.
Well, what I want to do, it's also, it's also.
Out the end.
Six fifty one. It's six fifty one. So I want to be mindful, uh, of time because we have, we have public hearing beginning at seven. Um, so now what I think this opens up is I hope that the, we had, is there anything, you're right, is there anything that you want to?
Let me just blast through these kind of, um, back and forth. So most of these I took from an, an agenda. This is from. I, I, so like, I just wanted to pick some old stuff. So this is, if we were to incorporate the idea of a consent agenda, what's here on the left is the agenda as it was published and as the commission took it. But I think that meeting summaries and committee reports are agenda items that could be disposed of as part of a unanimous consent agenda. And that would look something like, I didn't know it was going to fly in like that, something like this, where it's the first order of business or the approval of the minutes. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as written. The next on the order of business are committee reports. I mean, we have the comprehensive planning committee report. Someone from the committee gets up and gives it. Are there any questions? Hearing none, the committee report is filed. There's no motion, no vote. It's just if there's no objections, they're just accepted and approved.
Well, I mean, we could do that, but practically, or it's like an extra 30 seconds.
Oh, I don't disagree. Yeah.
We all was just saying.
Yep.
So is it more?
Comments and then, but I, I agree.
To, to demonstrate the concept of a consent agenda.
The Webster Grove City Council always has a consent agenda. And on that consent agenda would be like plaques where we're not going to make a presentation or like, there's like usually like four or five items.
Yeah.
The minutes. We have all of those on there, but if right before they approve the whole consent agenda and everything on there, they can remove something off and say,
Ah.
I'd like to make, I want a staff member to make a presentation. I don't understand that plat or I don't understand. And so we had one on, but sometimes we have five or six.
Um, interesting.
I'm used to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm used to somebody, you know, basically move for approval of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
And if someone says, I would like this to be removed.
Yeah.
It changes the agenda and then everything, this is still left on it.
You can still approve everything else.
Mm-hmm.
And you don't have to go through each thing. You get, they're all approved.
Except for that one thing someone asked to be.
That is dealt with at a subsequent meeting or just at the same meeting?
No, at the same meeting.
Yeah.
At the same meeting.
Um, so this is sort of what we were talking about with, this is the current state. So there's new business, a, a staff report, you know, and a new, uh, petition. You know, we'll now hear the staff recommendation. That happens. Mr. Taylor typically says, you've heard the staff recommendation. Is there a motion to recommend approval? Moved, seconded, and there, are there any questions? And then the consideration starts. But what we were discussing right before this was, you know, next is new business consideration of petitions. Is there a motion to recommend approval of PCO 3 and 04? Moved, seconded, then it's on the table, then staff presents. That way you can go right into discussion. That would be different. That would be something different. And then we talked a little bit about, as Ms. Hart mentioned, I think there's a world where something like letters for approval could be on a consent agenda. The only hitch are those items when we bring them in as a letter of approval, we've written like a cover memo or something to tell you about minor changes. We typically like to discuss those minor changes. So that's what would preclude if the commission, you know, was in favor of this. Um, something for being on the consent agenda.
Probably some changes in that somebody from the commission has.
Right, right.
Correct.
So a lot of this, a lot of information, I appreciate you guys coming along for this. What I want to leave you with is that at any time, uh, the commission can decide to review, amend, expand your written bylaws. Um, the chair can also direct staff to incorporate some of these changes outside of updating the bylaws. But then primarily what I also want to share with you is that we are currently doing a project to, um, create, make sure that our information reports are clear, concise and consistent for your use. So in September, I, I'm thinking late September at this point, we'd like to have a work session with the commission about information reports. Um, what information maybe you think you're not finding in there, what you like seeing, if there are exhibits that would be helpful with you. And I think that would be a really prime opportunity to come back and talk about some of these concepts as well. So I know I've gone right up to the hour, so I don't know if I should take any questions because I want you guys to be able to like go to the bathroom or whatever before the meeting. So.
Five minutes.
But email me individually if you have any questions from this that you want answered. I'll send the slides to the group. Um.
Please, but I, I'm going to ask anybody to recommend something to expedite the process to send that in.
Yeah. Yeah. And then I, we would need to gavel out of this work session.
You, Jared.
All right.
Who's going to be called for?
You want to?
He wants to take it over. Oh yeah, at the end of the day, the chair has.
It's like really two laps behind there.
Okay.
To be.
Verbetta, um, we'll see you in the other room. So, but I just stay on this link. Yeah, just stay on. And I think that. Yeah, just stay on, and I think that Sean from IT is gonna switch it over, so you should be good to go.
Oh, sorry to cut in real quick if you guys can hear me, but you will actually, you'll need to join from the other meeting.
Oh, did you hear that, Urbetta?
It's a different link?
Yeah, it should be separate meeting links, one for the work session and one for the public meeting.
Okay.
Send you another invite in a second.
Okay, send it.
Yes, thank you, Sean.
Get right on.
Absolutely, I'm going in this one.